In the Young Planning Commission meeting to order, today is Tuesday, June twentieth at four o'clock. And we have a roll call, please staff.
Um, so we have Commissioner Carlos Perez. Commissioner Bob Howard. Commissioner John Graver. Commissioner Richard Womestown. Commissioner Anne Warmond. Commissioner Jerry Fennick is excused. Commissioner John Thompson. Okay.
Very well, may I form, please stand to pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, item number four on the agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the attached minutes? Well, your motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion that we approve the minutes, a second.
I have a motion and a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If none, the minutes are approved. All right, now, uh, item, or rather, agenda item number six is for public comments, and I just want to read this all so that we're just all straight about this. Uh, oh, I'll go to number five, I forgot, I skipped one, number five, thank you. Are there any communications, staff?
Uh, just very briefly, um, we are in the process of signing a contract with a consulting firm to do the update of our comp plan. And development code amendments, so that's going to be keeping you all busy for the next year and a half or two.
Yes, yes, I remember. Is that all?
That's all.
Um, I'd also like to introduce our new administrative assistant, Hazel Hooker. And so she'll be here at all these meetings from now on. Uh, I took a different position in the city, so, and Hazel's great, and she's very happy to be here.
Very well, happy to, happy with us.
Savannah's our new building inspector.
Oh, wow, wonderful, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great. All right, now I think I can move on to item six on the agenda. Uh, if there's anyone in the audience that does wish to address the commission, the comments are limited to three minutes. And up to five speakers, and the comments on matters listed on, in the agenda are welcomed. And if there's anyone that does wish to comment, uh, please stand up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, anyone wishing to comment at this time on agenda items, very well. All right, agenda item number seven, unfinished business, is there any unfinished business from the last meeting? That we wish to cover? None? Item number eight on the agenda, any, uh, new business that needs to be addressed?
Yes, so we've got a couple items here. Um, the first one, it says discussion and possible action, it's really not an action item for this evening. But just to provide some background, we've been, um, approached. Uh, several times from, uh, developers who are interested in doing, um, mixed use development in our commercial districts. And we found that that can be really difficult to achieve based on, um, our parking requirements and our density requirements. And so down the road, we may be coming to you with some proposals to try to get unstuck when it comes to getting more development, um, downtown. So with that in mind, I invited Ron Thomas here from, um, Thomas Architecture. Yeah. To just talk a little bit about the issue, we've had some discussions before, he's done a lot of development. And particularly mixed use development in Olympia, and I think he's got some thoughts, I thought it'd be worth sharing.
Very well.
Thank you, Gary Thompson. Uh, I'm Ron Thomas, President of Thomas Architecture Studios, and I've been in front of you over the past year a few times, uh. Related to the Gateway, um, Lost Project on Steve Craig's property. But it really is nothing but a concept, is not a proposal yet for development, but it helped. Uh, form a discussion tool for talk, discussions about height and that sort of thing, and as you recall, in this past year. Uh, the city has adjusted, uh, in their land use code allowable height. And as we brought forward our proposal, uh, at a pre-sub meeting, and they gave us comments back. Several comments came back, and I thought they're in conflict with, uh, mixed use multifamily development in an urban area. That's what you're trying to set the pattern up, so I just wanted to simply talk about a few of them, add to mull it over. And at some later time, a, for a formal proposal might be brought forward by Gary or somebody else. And it can be done through a simple text amendment. It is not a comp plan amendment necessarily, and so I'm just going to talk about a couple of the items. And if you want, please ask me questions about this, why it's a barrier, so the first one. Um, Yell Municipal Code eighteen point three, five point oh four oh plus C, it just simply has to do with number of dwelling units allowed per acre. Right now, it's thirty-two units per acre. The componental on Steve's property, okay, that is a four over one, four floors of housing over one floor of commercial and other mixed use. It's not a little over a half an acre. It's not allowed under your current density code. So density in urban cores as it relates to multifamily should be removed. You just don't have it, why? You already capped the height. You want buildings out at the street, you know, at the back of the sidewalk edge, you ask for public, uh, pedestrian areas and that sort of thing, it doesn't affect that. And then the developer's going to be trying to fit his whatever parking he can on the site. So you're going to run into this again and again, and people will not develop, but this is a suburban type of, uh, density requirement, thirty units per acre. We're not talking about acres on downtown sites, I'm, so once you have a height limit, set back limits, use the limits. That's it, you just, you don't say anything more about density, so that's a suggestion, as Gary mentioned, no action tonight. And this doesn't even come up in the other jurisdictions that I work in, uh, we obviously have about. A dozen projects built in downtown Olympia, another several on the way in, uh, Lacey Worth Building. But I've also built several other communities, Tacoma and others, so it just doesn't exist in urban mixed use development, multifamily. Another one is, uh, currently it says, and I wish I had, oh yeah, uh, Yell Municipal Code eighteen point three, five point oh four oh point C. It sounds like the first one, but it says residential units shall represent no more than eighty percent of mixed use development. If we're keeping something like that, then you need to say what is included in the calculation, is it just residential units? Is it the net area? Because if I go to the gross area and include the cores and I include the lobby. Both on each floor and the downstairs, we're going to be way over eighty percent. Again, my suggestion is if you want to encourage a little bit of commercial. You can run this up to ninety percent and then say how you calculate that. That's what my suggestion would be, eighty percent is too high of a barrier, um. There's some logic to four over one that fits within your height limit, um, and so if it was strictly all, you know, was a gross area of all residential related. Then you're going to have a tough time meeting that eighty percent barrier, and so, and what you're trying to do through your land use code, especially for Yell. You're doing whatever you can to incentivize developers to come and do this type of development. It all relates back to the Growth Management Act, we mentioned that this is a good thing to do for Yell. It's keeping development out of the rural areas, otherwise it's just going to keep spreading. Uh, you know, the, the three-story garden style walk-ups, they're just going to keep doing them further and further away, because. That's what they can do economically, and so a little bit more density, these are the kind of things that are a barrier. Um, and so the other two items are rather minor. But they do come up in our pre-sub notes, and I'm just going to read one of the comments, this site will most likely require a turnaround. Or a hammerhead for a fire department vehicle access. There's no room, like zero, this is a half an acre, the building occupies roughly half the site, the parking occupies half the site. So if you wanted a hammerhead or a turnaround, then you're going to lose building and units, so it just, the two aren't compatible, and usually. There are exceptions to this, but, um, the fire department will attack a fire from each end of a building. And so they have a roughly a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, it depends which fire department, of pole length, so they'll go from one side. You know, reach rolling the end in the back, and they'll go along the other back. That's good, so in an urban environment, they usually don't need hammerheads or turnarounds. Again, that's a suburban requirement, so again, attention to that. And then another one, uh, I, I'm not going to have too many specifics, but take a look at your landscape code as it relates to parking lots. So I'll read a couple of things, twenty-four square feet of landscape development for each parking proposal. Parkings shall be located more than fifty feet from a tree, um, I'll use as an example, the, um. The Lost Project on Steve's property, a lot of that parking is tucked under the building. About twenty feet under, that's what we need in order to get building big enough and to get a sixty-foot wide parking lot, that won't fit on the site, so we literally. Tucked twenty feet underneath, uh, the building. Uh, you're not going to put trees up underneath the building or plants underneath the building, and then you got to decide. Well, what do we want to require? When usually the urban housing's up against, uh, either another zone or just for separation, might, we want some. Uh, fencing, some vertical planting, something like that could become more important than having a tree every fifty feet. So it's just something for you to think through, and if you want more of my input, I can come back and show you what we're doing on other projects. But it's another one of those things that is a, a little bit of a barrier. To this kind of housing being developed in your urban center, and it's good to remind people that these requirements are different on purpose in your urban center. That's the only place this height is allowed, and so all of these other things I'm talking about, they are unique to multifamily housing in an urban center. So those are a few, uh, have I forgotten any, Gary, that we chatted about?
Covered pretty well.
Okay, okay, and, yeah.
Could you, uh, refresh my memory, where is his property?
His, his property is literally about eight blocks down, so you know where the new middle school development is at, and the, uh, beautiful. All-weather ball field, he's literally across the street.
Oh, okay.
Literally across the street, that's his property, undeveloped, undeveloped property, yeah. And I, I hate to speak too specifically about that because we have not found a developer yet, uh, for it. We, we did this concept, it's what we do, um. As a means to facilitate this discussion in Yell, because people can see, oh, wow, we can get that building here in Yell, wow, yes, let's discuss. But you know, what we can do to our land use code to make changes, and so we certainly hope it attracts somebody, I think it's an excellent site. With this type, there are other sites that are being looked at, yeah.
So, Gary, you're going to bring these issues up at some time?
Yeah. Definitely interested in changing the way we do density in the, in the mixed use development area. We're interested in looking at, um, flexibility with parking, I haven't really thought much about the landscape piece, but. Um, you know, we want to do what makes sense. Uh, and of course you can't, you know, replicate the same plan for every single property, so if you've got something tucked underneath the building, then maybe. Landscaping needs to be looked at differently in that situation.
And I do believe in the principle of, um, what's fair for one is fair for all, um. Uh, I want to make sure it's good, not just for this site, but for all of downtown, because as soon as somebody does it. Everybody wants the same benefits, and so if the land use code is changed with these slight edits, then it's good for all, good for all, yeah.
Now, we've had probably, in addition to this, in the last few weeks. Three or four, not applications, but again, sort of concepts come through the door that are pretty similar.
Nice.
So, um, we definitely want to try to encourage it.
Other questions?
Anyone else have questions?
I was curious if this applies to the central business district as well as the multi-use, um, zoning?
Well, it could, I mean, we're primarily thinking about the central business district at the moment.
I'd like to just recap real quick, just to make things that we are maybe going to be thinking about, that's the density issue, the central, in this. Central district, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, then the other is, uh, the percentage of, uh. Uh, a redefinition of the percentage that.
Of residential uses. A percentage of residential uses as a part of a mixed use, currently it's eighty percent, I'm suggesting that's too high.
So long as we define it though, and say, it, it, this, this and this.
You could say it's just the net area of the units. And that's going to gain you, but I'm just suggesting eighty percent, you might want to adjust it to eighty-five to ninety percent, because that will still require. Some other use, and I know the purpose is to try to get some commercial on the ground floor, but I can tell you from experience, commercial is the toughest thing. You, I've seen, you've seen so many buildings in other cities, they're empty on the ground floor, residential is, it tends to lease up very quickly. Uh, commercial uses are tough, so careful about requiring them to do too much commercial. Yeah, that's all I'm saying. The other one had to do with fire department access.
Yes.
The third one, and then the fourth one was landscape within, uh, multifamily housing within the CBD, yeah.
Mr. Thomas, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, always nice to see you. Pretty, I'm going to excuse myself, or don't mean to be rude, at the next meeting. All right, you want to chat?
Any more new business, Gary?
I'm sorry?
Any more new business?
Uh, well, we are, um, it's going to be a public hearing, but. Apart from that, I didn't really prepare a presentation on the Housing Action Plan, because you all have had, you know, a workshop, and you've had a couple presentations. I have a slide thing, you know, loaded up, if we have questions and want to go back, but. We're, uh, tonight, it's just to actually hold the hearing and take action on what we're recommending, which is adopting this proposed final draft for the Housing Action Plan. Uh, we're on a timeline because of a Department of Commerce grant, uh, which funded this. We are supposed to have it adopted by the end of June to be in compliance with the grant.
I, I have one question about, it's nothing, it has to do with, uh. Uh, the implementation and the monitoring of the plan.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it talks about the third-party reviewing, who do we foresee to be that third-party reviewing development?
Okay, so that's, that's a hypothetical situation, and I guess that, uh, the third party would typically be, so for example, we get traffic studies sometimes. And they will be presented to us by a traffic engineer for the applicant. We will on occasion have an on-call consultant traffic engineer, usually it's been SCJ Alliance, but, uh, we have another one that we use as well. Uh, to review those documents, and the reasoning behind having third-party contracts is just. To address those situations where maybe we're at a bottleneck, you know, we don't have a lot of time, maybe we've got a lot of applications in, so on occasion. We could hire somebody, because I would say Chris and Savannah were completely swamped, we might, I mean, it hasn't happened yet. But we might ask, um, you know, an on-contract building inspector to come in and speed things up. So far, they keep up great, but that's just a hypothetical, so that's what that's about, it's about trying to, um. Facilitate the permitting process so that people aren't just left hanging, waiting for the process to. Run through the motions.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions or objections? Okay, well, thank you, Gary, um. Next, we have a public hearing scheduled for today. So as a consequence of that. Uh, today being Tuesday, June the twentieth, I'm opening the, the Young Planning Commission for a public hearing at four nineteen, according to that. Uh, today's hearing is on the proposed adoption of the Housing Action Plan. I'll open the floor for public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak, if you're on your computer, you raise your hand, and if present, you come up to the podium. And please give your name and address for the record. Do we have any online? This is going to be another fact.
This agenda looks so long when we started.
No. All right, then, uh, there'll be no testimony. Um, uh, there any, uh, questions from the commission regarding this document? Richard?
No, quite, no questions. No questions.
No. All right, there'll be no further testimony, and I'll pose a hearing at four twenty, yeah. Uh, do I hear a motion from anyone regarding the Housing Action Plan?
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend adoption of the Housing Action Plan as in this draft. Uh, and we recommend.
I'll hear the second.
I'll second.
I have a motion to adopt the Housing Action Plan at a second, now all those in favor, go aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hear none? The Housing Action Plan is to be recommended to the City Council for your.
Great, thank you.
Well, I also want to thank, uh, you guys, the staff, and this SCJ, I thought it was an excellent. Presentation, and the document I think was very thorough, and it covered just about every, any question that I had. So, I mean. What we want to do, what we'd like to do, what we should do. So, thank you very much.
And now that we do have it adopted, um, Commerce has grants for implementation too, so there may be some things in there that we can start working on by obtaining grants to do that.
All right, do we have any, uh, subcommittee reports on the agenda? Item number ten.
Um, on the, on the parks, let me think. Shift gears here, um. We've gotten, um, the, the go-ahead to be going and schedule the next step that's happening, um, by project manager, um, uh. Under coding, uh, is to schedule the actual removal of the tracks, uh, from the trail. Uh, that go all the way to, uh, the river. And not across as yet, but to the river, and, um. Um. So that should be happening, um, I'm going to say any day now, I'll find out when it's actually scheduled, because there are certain homeowners. That live alongside both sides of the, uh, the tracks, um, that start at the Centralia Power Canal and go all the way to, uh, the river. And that is outside the city limits, but, um, these are neighbors of mine, I want to make sure that they are aware. Uh, this is happening and that it's, um. It's definitely a, a good thing, that it's happening.
There a timeframe on when that bridge would be safe and passable to cross the river and continue the bypass on up the.
We have received funding out on the website, uh, the Young, uh, Public Works portion of the website, it says that the. The grant to go across the river, uh, to, to upgrade the bridge has been granted, uh, to Yell. Uh, that's in the next funding cycle, so we're, we're currently funding the, the one that goes from Centralia Power Canal to the bridge, um. And, um, so that'll be our next phase. Uh, and, uh, in our last, uh, uh, Parks Board meeting, um. Uh, and, uh, in our last, uh, uh, Parks Board meeting, um. I think it was Cody that said he had been to a meeting with Pierce County. And they're starting their planning to get a grant to go from the bridge to Roy.
Okay.
So you'll not only be able to go across the bridge, you'll be able to go all the way to Roy.
Wow.
And, uh, uh, from what I understand, the plans are, uh, at least to go from. Uh, the power canal, uh, all the way to Roy with a horse path alongside the, uh, the. Uh, the, the bike path, um, so, um, that's especially good because of the. Really, the, the people that want to make use of that, uh, to have a way to get across. Um. So that's, that's sort of the main, uh, aspect, the second thing is that they're going out for bid on the dog park. Uh, the dog park is, uh, due to start, um, and. Within the next month in July, and by, um. End of August to September, we'll have a, a dog park that's up and, and running. Uh, they're still looking for. Uh, businesses and or individuals that would like to, uh, have. Uh, some. Memorative aspect in the, in the dog parks that are, uh. They're used for dogs to be able to do jumps, runs, um. I don't think there's something like a, uh, fire hydrant or something like that, but the. Various.
Oh, you should have a fire rider.
And Cody had said to me that there is a, um, uh. The company that they're looking at working with to get these, um. Objects for the, uh, dog park, uh, they'll be able to put up a website. That has the various options that people can choose if they want to. Uh, give a donation and to, to help purchase specific dog park items. Uh, it'll be a very, very big dog park, it'll have a parking lot and lights. And, uh, restroom facilities, uh, as well as a small dog, uh, section and a large dog section. And, um, and a special watering, uh, capability for the dogs. And so, it's, um. I think it's going to be quite the addition.
Is there any, uh, minimum amount for the donations, or has that been established yet?
Um, there, as far as I know, there's no minimum or maximum, so this, it's just a matter of what. Um, I would suggest that if you're interested to, um. There'll probably be something that's put up on the, the website, uh, the town website. With the, uh, specific alternative, uh, items that could be chosen. So, go look at them.
Yeah, the least expensive donation gets your name on the fire hydrant.
Yeah.
I have a fire hydrant if one's needed.
Yeah, um, Chris might be able to touch on, uh, the clipboard, but, uh, I'm also a part of the, uh. You know, Arts Council, it's not the Arts Council, it's really the Creative Arts District.
Yes.
And so, uh, and the, the difference is we're not trying to create art, we're just trying to get the, actually trying to get some monies towards. Having arts done, you know, in Yale, um, we have gotten up to, I think it's, we're right around six hundred. Um, surveys, and I've got, I brought this with me, and I appreciate anybody who hasn't taken the survey to. We're going to do a scan, a QR code, and it'll pull the survey up, but we have to have a s- a minimum. Amount of surveys before they'll actually take our, um, application. Yeah, yeah, so, um, we're at that point, we're getting really close now, so that's the push is to try and get. Just a few more, and, and then we can put our application in, and then we dive into the next section of it.
I have a question for you, John, uh, the people that take the survey, do they need to be in the city limits? They do not?
No, it's just someone who has to be, no, it doesn't have to be in the city limits, it's just have someone. I mean, we would first someone who uses Yale, what, you know, is, is somehow attached to Yale in some way, you know, but. Yeah, but anybody can take it.
And that, uh, code is, I mean, that is on the website, or?
Yeah, it's also on our website, which is through Yale, you know, is in Yale also, um, but it's, and I've got more of these in the car, but, uh. No, it's just basically, you know, pop on their phone, it only takes a few minutes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, let me do it before we go.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, then, Chris, do you have anything else, Chris?
The, uh, Tree Advisory Board breaks for the summer, so we'll reconvene in September. And the Young Historic Preservation Commission also breaks for summer, so we'll also reconvene in September. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission, we're going to be working on very interesting things. Um, as many of you know, next year will be the Centennial, Yale was, you know, declared a city in nineteen twenty-four. So, um, Lynn Roy, who works for the City of Yale, has quite a few events planned, um, to honor our Centennial. And we're going to meet in September with the Historic Commission, and she's going to present some of her ideas and take some suggestions, and we'll see if we can. Really celebrate one hundred years as a city.
What, what month is that in twenty-four?
I want to say it was October or November.
Okay.
Try and celebrate before that, so we're not out there in the cold. But even more like a late spring, early summer, and maybe celebrations throughout the year, in one event that really honors Yale history.
Okay, well, that's good, that's, I didn't realize it was hundred years. Oh, I didn't hear that. What's that? All right, any other? Reports to be made? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
All right.
Uh, motion to adjourn and seconded, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Now, I'm cutting me on Bob.